Do we need to review Zoom procedures?
No, I think we should be all set. Only Sean is online.
Okay.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Sean. Okay. Would anyone like to move approval of the agenda? Great. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion by Gabe, second by Maria.
Okay. Okay, so comments from the chair. So did just want to touch on two items. Guess the first is the Elks Club, Gabe met with. Oh, wait, we don't have any. Okay, yeah, I guess the public input session is like, okay. Are you here for the public input session or did you have? Okay, good. Making sure there weren't other, you know. Usually we have like a public comment section.
That's number four.
Oh, oh, okay. Oh, general business. Okay. I'm a little out of it. I'm flustered because I was mine for a long time at Kenny Drugs. Uh, so, okay, so before we do general business, Gabe met with Stephen Whitaker to discuss the, he wanted to discuss the Elks Club. And I know we briefly touched upon that at our last meeting. And I guess what I didn't understand, I remember, Mike, you were talking about how they've really changed the designations now statewide. But I didn't realize that, I guess, part of the reason this, maybe you probably said this and I just didn't pick up on it. Part of the reason the expansion was denied was because if I understand this correctly, the Elks Club wasn't in our current city plan. But it is in this, we do touch upon it in this plan, right?
Yes.
And so were you saying that, like, the city's plan is, or the city's idea is to wait for hearing about new designations, or do you have an idea of what designation will? I'm just trying to think about, is our city plan well poised to meet what might be forthcoming? And I was a little unclear on that.
So that's going to be the tricky part because the Act 181 eliminated the programs that exist today. And there's going to be new programs that are going to come up to replace them. But we don't know what they are and we don't know what the rules are going to be to apply for them. And then separately, you're going to have the Act 250 exemptions are going to be tied to what those are, and they're going to fall into like Tier 1A, Tier 1B, Tier 2 and Tier 3. So Tier 1A.
You have until 2027, use the current.
Yeah, the current ones will be there till 2027. And in theory, some of them will automatically, our understanding is, will automatically roll into the new program.
City centers, town centers.
So, yeah, so our designated downtown, they're not going to have to go back and reapply as far as we know. But again, we don't have the new designations, we don't have the new rules, but the thought is, you know, Montpelier Alive is still going to be Montpelier Alive and they're still going to exist. Because they are designated downtown. That program will, may have a different name, but it will continue. As far as we know, the question starts to come up with neighborhood designations, which we don't have, growth centers, which we do have, are expected to be phased out. We don't know what that means and what they're going to be replaced with.
But we don't quite know whether the language in our, the proposed language in our city plan will meet. And are we going to know before final passage of the city plan? And I also know there's all this other stuff swirling around.
So I'm trying to write it generally. So most of this is in the land use plan, which is our last chapter that we have to do. The last three are community services, resilience and land use. So we have community services ready to go. Resilience, I have written up the implementation plan and I have sent that to John Copans, who is with the Montpelier Resiliency and Recovery Commission, he's their executive director. I'm going to be working with him to review that, to kind of make sure things are more on the same page. And I'm currently, today, I was writing the storyboard for resilience. I was also, I also put together some land use maps that I need to have my staff develop. So I gave him a bunch of maps to start putting together. So we can start mapping it out. And that's where we start getting into, okay, well, what do we want to put on the map and how do we want to describe it? So one of them is going to be existing designations. And if we're going to go and amend our growth center, which, as I've tried to point out, unlike a designated downtown, unlike a new town center, unlike an NDA, neighborhood designated area, growth centers have an expiration date. They're, they're good for 20 years. So ours was just renewed or would have just been renewed this year. So we have another five more years. So the question is, how much work is it going to be? How much is it going to cost to do the amendment? That would be necessary to add in that Country Club Road property. And that's the hard part. That's what we're trying to figure out.
Versus the waiting for the new rules.
Versus waiting for the new rules because, you know, it's unfortunate. I don't think there was any advantage to what happened. We had already, we were approved and, you know, for reasons that are beyond me, Stephen decided he wanted to go and have that revoked. And to no advantage of anything that I can tell. So it, you know, that, the rules that the state were using were inconsistent with statute. So we were following what were the state rules. The state rules were inconsistent with statute. So they did end up revoking it, but it serves no useful purpose, other than to stop development on the Country Club Road property. So. It'll cost us, it'll cost us, it'll cost us maybe $40,000 to reapply. And that's the concern. That's taxpayer dollars. I got to ask the taxpayers in an area where we got very high budgets.
We've had lawsuits, we've had all kinds of things, right, in the city. And I asked him about, I mean, he could come in some other time and speak for himself, but he said he felt like that we weren't following. And I'm, I don't know that much about it, Mike, because it's never come through here. Like you guys were already doing public input sessions to the Elks Club way before I ever joined the commission. That was, stuff was already, you'd had multiple meetings, I think, before I ever got here. But I guess there was some recommended paths forward and he feels like we weren't following whatever the next steps were for due diligence or something. So he's, you know, his point was that these things should come through the planning commission. I don't know if they should or shouldn't, but I asked him that exact question while we were about to get the growth center designation and why. And it was because he didn't want, you know, us to get ahead of ourselves and we didn't have a plan on how to execute. That's what he, that's what he said. So. But yeah, I hear you, right? It's taxpayer dollars and.
Yeah, now it's going to cost a lot. And the question is, do we, do we spend?
Do we even?
Do we, do we want to spend $30,000 or $40,000 in taxpayer dollars for a three and a half year approval? And those are the questions that we're going to have to come up with. And maybe it's not going to be, we're working, we're negotiating with the, with the state right now to see if there's a middle ground that we can meet at, that would go through and say, we can update the plan, we can update the growth center and kind of meet in the middle on, on the discussion. But that was, that's TBD, to be determined, and we'll figure that out.
I spoke with Alex Farrell last week. And, and from the state's point of view, they are hoping that we reapply. I mean, then maybe we won't, but for the planning commission, like, the one thing that we can do is make sure that the city plan is done as soon as possible.
Right.
Right. Yeah. And the issue that we have is not only trying to make sure we, we put into the city plan what we want, but this takes a long time to do these things. So we have to be thinking of the what ifs as well. What, what can we do to try to make things a little bit bigger or different? Like we said, we adopt the city plan in 2017, December of 2017, almost 2018. Not knowing that in 2022, we would purchase the Country Club Road and want to put housing on it and need to have it in the growth center in order to be eligible for TIF and needing the TIF in order to make the project move forward. And so basically what ended up stopping the growth center applications is that particular parcel is not identified in the city plan. Even though the spirit of everything that we're trying to accomplish, it wasn't actually on the map. And according to statute, it has to be on the map. And that was why. Well, that's, but the thing is, in the future, we don't, we don't want to be, we don't want to have to keep coming back. Unlike a zoning regulation, we could go through and say, oh, we need to get this fixed because there's a project coming in that needs to go. We could do an interim set of zoning regulations and get it changed in about four to six weeks. Changing city plans, there is no interim amendment to a zoning, to a city plan. So you have to go through a much longer process, which includes reports, amending all of the, the entire document needs to be updated. We tried this once in 2017. We needed to readopt the city plan in order to adopt the zoning that we had worked for six years to get ready. And because it had taken so long through the public hearing process, all of a sudden, we were running out of time on our city plan. And then people who were opposed to the zoning changes recognized that and pushed it to the limit. And then when we went to update the city plan, they said, you, according to statute, you need to follow all of these rules. And you've got to amend the entire plan before you can readopt it. And so that added months to that process. You can't just go through, yeah, it's.
We made a new map and it's like this.
Yeah, it's like somebody goes through and says, oh, look, we got, you know, we got this great project that can come up. Can we move this? Can we, can we do something to help this project move forward? The fastest a city plan can move is like six months. And that would be really fast. You're probably looking at nine months to a year to amend the city plan. Which means as we're trying to, to be flexible, it becomes a little bit more difficult. So what we want to do with the city plan is start thinking about, all right, are there ways that we can go through and say, this is what we want? But can we buffer that a little bit? To give ourselves some room in the event, something comes up that we're able to go through and say, you know, just because we put it in the plan that says we want this in the growth area, it doesn't actually mean we're going to put it in the growth area. It's kind of a buffer that goes around it that says, if something changed, and we'll have to have that conversation. How do we get over that? And, you know, getting to the Elks Club question that, you know, we're just, we're stuck where we are right now and we'll figure it out. And we'll make a path, working with city council as to how they want to do it and how much funds they want to expend to, to get this going. But it definitely puts, definitely puts a crimp in things because, you know, we actually found out through this process that what we thought was exactly the opposite. We thought we could continue to move forward on the TIF, but we wouldn't have the Act 250 exemptions. We actually have the Act 250 exemptions, but we can't move forward on the TIF. And the TIF is actually one of the key pieces we need. So otherwise, otherwise the taxpayers have to pick up the payment. So, you know, this becomes.
So you can't afford on TIF because of the growth center.
You need to have a growth center. That needs to be in the growth center in order.
250 exemptions apply regardless?
The Act 250 exemptions actually apply regardless.
It was distance from a growth center.
Distance from the existing growth center, which is currently Saban's pasture. So we actually, because there's a, within a quarter mile of an existing growth center gets included, we are actually included in the Act 250 exemption because we are close enough to, yep.
And NDA won't get us there? NDA, like the neighborhood development area?
That's where the question comes up. What do we do? Do we, do we go with a different designation? Do we, you know, if, if I have to reapply, why would I reapply for a growth center expansion? If I've got to spend $40,000, I should do a new town center. The new town center doesn't have an expiration date, but will cost me the same amount of money to apply.
I see.
So that's where we start ending up with these questions of, how do we describe it in the city plan? Because we don't want to be so prescriptive in the city plan that we say growth center and new town center. We end up with new state designations in a year or two that have different names. And then the Stephen Whitakers come out of the woodwork and say, well, that doesn't count because it's the wrong name. And now you've got to spend a year amending your city plan to change the name because it doesn't match. So we have to be general enough that we don't tie our hands, but specific enough that it actually can be used to get us there.
No, I thought you could get a TIF that wasn't in a growth center because Stephen Whitaker forwarded me the long memo that I read. And I thought it said at the end that you could.
No, we, no. And that was what we had thought too, but in the end, we can't.
Oh, okay.
You have to meet two of the three requirements and we only meet one of them. So we technically don't get ourselves in.
Okay.
So I have another question. So if we decide not to pursue, like, a new application for the growth center boundary, does that mean that no construction will start until the state provides the new rules? Or, I mean.
Don't, don't, don't know. It'll, it's a don't know. We are, we do have the money to move forward on due diligence and getting things ready. So unless we're told otherwise, the, the plan is to move forward with engineering and designing all the utilities, sewer, road, everything up to the site, which is what we planned to do anyways. So those pieces may be prepped and ready to go, but we can't. We didn't want to go to find a developer until we had TIF because it would be very important for the developer to know how we're going to pay for the infrastructure in the site. As it turns out, we're not going to be able to get TIF. So that piece is probably put off. It's at least put off a year because we can't, we won't even start doing a TIF until we can get the growth center. So that won't be till next summer.
And my other question is like, I mean, I keep sitting in front of these maps. Is there, is the city putting stuff like this together? I guess maybe this is like before.
That was, that was a private developer that was putting that, putting those ideas together.
This is our random proposal that just fell into their lap. Okay.
Yep. It was, well, they, they just wanted to put together a proposal. And we said we weren't there yet. The process is that we want to go to, whether it's a master developer or whether it gets subdivided and get other developers, that'll be up to city council to decide how that process actually happens for the development. But in the very least, we need to know we've got the TIF because we're going to need to build up the roads in the sewer and the water. We're going to try to get grants to get the water, sewer and roads to the site. But.
I thought you said we could start on that already.
We can start getting to the site and we're starting the design work, the designing and the engineering. And we're applying for grants to try to build the road out. We don't know how much we'll be able to get. If it'll be enough to, to build that out. Well, there's a lot we still need to learn, but that's what we're working on. But what we do know is, because we can't get the TIF, you know, at best, the TIF wouldn't be something we, we wouldn't be able to start till next summer, which probably means not looking for developers until next year's 2025, not till 2026 to find a developer. So it definitely put us off for a year, without a doubt. It were bumped the year. The question is, how much does that hurt?
Sounds like it hurts about a year.
And it hurts, it definitely hurts for us, definitely hurts for us who are working on it, but.
The council might decide to sell the parcel too, right? Oh, just a piece?
Yeah, there's a discussion of a piece of it.
Okay.
That would be for the council to figure out. So anything else on the growth center?
And I know we want to get to the public input session. So I'll just quickly mention that Maria and I had a nice meeting with two members of the homelessness task force. Just to connect about the bike safe, bike path safety issues. But I, you know, I think they're some, you know, somewhat concerned that we're demonizing, or maybe demonizing, it's too strong a word. You know.
Disparaging.
Disparaging. Or, well, I don't know. We are disparaging. But, but we don't know who it is. Yes, exactly. We don't want to, yeah. But then kind of touched on some of the issues with, they're just around the river, there are, you know, pockets of hangout areas and, and, you know, what, how can we address that through other solutions? And anyway, I think just to mention that we, you know, connected with them and I think we're going to stay in touch and, you know, should the planning commission try to move forward on any recommendations around the bike path, we would, we would connect with the homelessness task force certainly before doing that. I don't know. Maria, anything else you want to?
No, I think it was a good meeting.
Just trying to make sure you mic, microphone, just so public can hear us.
I mean, that was the, the result of the meeting is that we kind of agreed that we would share information between the two committees, the commission and the committee, they're a committee, not a commission.
I guess.
But I, I mean, it was helpful because I, I think Zach confirmed that it was, it was a combination of people who do have homes also hang out there. You know, it's not just like a certain population that's hanging out there. Which I think goes back to what I hope is our recommendation to improve the planning of that entire area and make it more lively and increase safety that way as opposed to, you know, villainizing a certain group.
Yeah. And I, I was wondering, I mean, we are considering the public safety.
Oh, that's today.
Justice. I mean, well, I don't know if it's.
I think public safety, we had this discussion.
Oh, we did, okay.
That public safety actually meant the public safety departments, not actual public safety. That was like one of my first meetings on that mission.
Okay. Okay. So we didn't discuss this last time and I completely forgot. Yeah, I just, yeah. I mean, I was wondering, is it something that we could put into the city plan in terms of like, just kind of having an ongoing awareness of where these pockets are that might feel unsafe to people and, and how to, you know, make recommendations or think about the design and planning of those spaces. But anyway, TBD.
Yeah.
Okay. So now we can move on to general business. Comments from the public on something that's not on the agenda, so. Please come forward to the mic and introduce yourself.
I'm Laura LaRosa. I live in Montpelier. And I wanted to know just quickly, because this isn't actually why I came, came for the public input session, but it's about the growth center application. So there were two, at least two people who were concerned about the growth center application. I was one of them. And my concern was that it also included like residential 9,000 neighborhoods, which is something I hadn't heard about before. I, I, not the 9,000 neighborhoods. I know what they are because I live in one. I didn't know that there was a plan to include residential 9,000 neighborhoods in the growth center. And I found it confusing because I didn't think there, there was really any information explaining why you would need the same type of regulations you're looking for in the Elks Club property. Why do you want to apply that to just like neighborhoods on sort of the outskirts of town? And so people keep talking, when they talk about the growth center application, they seem to just focus only on the Elks Lodge. And I have no problem with developing that. I have no objection. I think that's really good. But when you, like, as a group, the city seems to, like, omit references to expanding to other neighborhoods. And I find that, like, uncomfortable. It makes me feel like I'm not getting all the information I should get. So I would just encourage the commission and the city council to think about how you can do better to provide targeted information to neighbors and neighborhoods about changes that might impact them. Because I talked to some people who live on like Town Hill Road, they had no idea that there was this growth center application. And they don't know what it means. And so they asked me and I'm, am probably providing like incorrect information because I don't have a lot of good information to go from. So.
Yeah, if I can ask you a question, I'm just curious. Sorry, were you done or?
I'm done.
Okay. So somebody asked you about the, I'm just curious where they heard about it. Just again.
I heard about it from the bridge, like.
Oh, okay. Oh.
Like a couple of months ago, the bridge had an article that said, you know, there's going to be this hearing at the Community Investment Board. And I thought, oh, I have no idea why this would apply to a neighborhood like mine. So I went and I objected specifically to like my, to the residential 9,000 neighborhoods being included. And then like I have just been following from afar, what, what's happened.
Maybe, should we close the door?
But anyway, I heard about it from the bridge. I did go back and I saw that the city council had, had this on the agenda, I guess, like twice earlier in the year. And I read the agendas, but I just like overlooked this reference to residential 9,000. And I bet a lot of people don't even know that they live in a residential 9,000 neighborhood. And agendas could, so one specific suggestion would be that agendas could be more specific to help people understand if an agenda item impacts them. But thank you for your question.
Can I ask what your, it sounded like you objected to the residential 9,000 designation for your own neighborhood?
Yeah.
Why was that?
Because from what I read about what the growth center is supposed to mean, so my, the impression I got is that it is to do larger scale development than what's currently allowed by our zoning. I don't know if that's a correct assumption, but that's, that's what I picked up. And I felt like there wasn't any information provided. And then also when I read about like, it's supposed to be for like walkable neighborhoods that are like part of the downtown. And the area where I live isn't really, I think, a walkable neighborhood that's connected to the downtown. Only people like walk downtown like on the weekends or if they're like, people who are going to work downtown or going shopping downtown are all driving. So I thought it, so it's going to, whatever increased development, I'm getting a little like discombobulated on this topic, but I feel like any increased development would just lead to increased traffic. And traffic safety is a big concern because I think the area where I live isn't very safe for pedestrians already. I mean, that's essentially what I told the Community Investment Board too.
Thank you.
But thank you for asking.
And no, so we probably, you know, I can work with Evelyn to try to do more outreach and better outreach. So the growth center, it, it won't override or change our zoning. We still have to meet our zoning. What it, what it would do is exempt developers from the Act 250 process. And it's not always large projects. Act 250 has some strange triggers to it, how you get into Act 250. It's nine units within five miles over five years. So somebody might be a developer who decides to do four, you know, four or five small projects. You know, maybe it's a triplex a year. Well, they would trigger Act 250. And so if you're in a growth center, none of those developments that happen in the growth center count towards triggering that Act 250. So even if they do three projects in Berry, two projects in Berlin and one in Montpelier, they get triggered, they get, they get tripped in. And an Act 250 application can cost you hundreds of thousands of dollars to get in and get through. So the idea was not necessarily to have giant projects in every, every neighborhood. But a lot of our developers we have in Montpelier are actually just small developers that do little projects here and there, and they'll do two or three. And they might get tripped in simply by these, these rules. And so the idea was these neighborhoods, mostly not, not 100%, but a large percentage were already in our growth center in 2009. They were removed in 2016 and we were just working to put them back in. The exception being Country Club Road, that was never in. So that was part of it is there was a little, you know, but yes, we clearly needed to do a better job of, of outreach. But it can be, it can be tricky on some of these to know how much outreach to connect with people. I mean, we try, we, we work a lot. The bridge does a good job of getting the information out, but it's not, it's not always the, the timing. And sometimes we're kind of in, in under the gun to get an application in. So we're trying to be as quick as we can, try to get as much output. And we're trying to think, who could object to this? Probably not going to be a lot of people, but in the absence of information, people might think this is going to be something bigger than it is. Probably not going to be a lot of people, but in the absence of information, people might think this is going to be something bigger than it is. Um, and um, in, in that case, we needed to do a better job of getting the correct information out um earlier. But uh, you know, I'll work with, uh, we always bring these things up, we talk about these things. Um, you know, I'll talk to city manager, talk to Evelyn, who's our communications coordinator. And hopefully we'll do a better job of getting more of the information out going forward on that. Um, but it, it doesn't override the zoning. Um, and in this case, the revised, what had been approved by the board did not include your neighborhood because they only approved areas that had existing sidewalks. So, yeah.
Just to, just to follow up on that, but part of their approval did say that if sidewalks were added, then they'd automatically be added in the growth center application.
If, yes, if, yeah, if we went in, we could add, again, the growth center is only good for three years. So if they built it in three years, they'd have the benefit.
But this is an interesting caveat that would be important to me. But I, I really appreciate what you're saying because one of my concerns was does this override zoning? Because everything I saw about like growth sensor applications said like you can have seventy four units and it's like, does that?
It's, it's Act Two Fifty, so if you were allowed to have seventy four units on your property, then you could get to take it, it's, that's where the trigger is for Act Two Fifty. If you're in a growth center, the trigger was seventy four until Act One Eighty One, which we had just been talking about. And I had thought it was still seventy four, but apparently um with Act One Eighty One, it completely exempts properties that are in the growth center from Act Two Fifty. So.
Well, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, and I, I feel like that's something that maybe at some point, if we have extra time on the planning commission. We could, we could do, I mean, I'd love to do, I saw that once that like Brattleboro did like a walking tour and like had people visualize, you know, here's what this zoning would mean for this parcel. And I just think that's great because I think zoning can be really confusing and, and people hear numbers or designations or whatever and it, it can be alarming. But to really look at what the possibilities and the restrictions are, I think would be great, anyway, okay. Any other general business? Okay, so I think Mike is going to introduce our public input session and just um briefly touch upon the three areas that we are uh, seeking comment on and, and we'll be excited to get some public input, hopefully.
All right, and so I'm just going to go through the, the city plan presentation and then we can decide what chapters we want to go through. Last, at the last meeting, we tried to go through all three chapters and it took a long time. We really didn't get a lot of time for public input, but we'll go through the presentation. Uh, and then leave open room to, to talk about. And then we can go into any one of the three storyboards or any one of the three uh implementation plans. So uh, really quick, this presentation, we'll go over the background and history, what is the city plan, why is it important? Um, it's all in three chapters, two parts, that'll make more sense later when I explain it. Got, we're reviewing three of the twelve chapters tonight. Um, what is our overall input process and then how the rest of tonight will work? So, big question everyone always has, where to find the current plan? We're, we are working on doing an online plan. Um, it's a web based plan, if you go to the city's website and you scroll down and I can show this later on. There's a set of boxes and one of the boxes is city plan twenty twenty four and that will take you to a page uh, that looks like this. And when you scroll down, these symbols, there are now nine of these symbols uh on there. And each of these takes you to a storyboard and down below, we've got the list of the PDFs. These are the, the, the implementation plans. So every chapter has a storyboard, historic, and everyone has an implementation plan, there's historic resources. This is all temporary until we, um, which should be coming up very, very quickly within the next couple of weeks. There's going to be a separate website, which will be a little bit more seamless, a little bit more flawless. Um, we had to break it out because we were trying to present it in pieces. And obviously people would get confused if three quarters of the plan didn't work and had buttons that didn't work. So we tried to work it this way. So a little bit of background, for fifty years, we had the Montpelier Master Plan. Um, so this is being called uh the Montpelier City Plan. So it's a little bit different, mostly just because master plans are a term of art. And uh, we, this has never been a master plan. So the planning commission voted uh at the start of this process that the new plan will be called the Montpelier City Plan. Uh, it was most recently updated in twenty ten and amended in twenty seventeen, they're good for eight years. So uh, it's good till twenty twenty five, December of twenty twenty five. There's a completely new format and content. Um, and the process started in twenty sixteen, developing goals and strategies. We met with uh various committees and commissions, whoever was responsible for something. So we've got twelve chapters, historic, housing, energy. We also have a lot of committees, so we would talk with the historic preservation commission about historic. And we talked about the housing task force and the housing committee about the housing plan and so forth for all the different chapters. And that was started in twenty sixteen and uh continued right through till this year, we're still working on the, the last plan. Though uh, it's a web based plan format, as I mentioned, with separate chapters for each topic. Our current city plan was not organized that way. We think organizing it by twelve chapters is going to be easier to update it in the future and uh to discuss uh strategies. Uh, the new format is also um has aspirations, goals and strategies with the goal of having a more actionable plan. So that was one of our, our goals was to not have a lot of things that said we support and encourage things. We wanted to really have an actionable plan, uh amend the zoning to do this, create a program to do this, have a policy that states this, those types of things. And then um the city plans, as I mentioned, were valid for eight years. So uh, what is a city plan and why is it important? City plants are not required under state law, but you do need to have a city plan if you want to adopt or update your zoning. You do need to have a city plan if you want to take part in Act Two Fifty or Section Two Forty Eight. So um, if the city wanted to participate in one of those hearings to support a project or not support a project, we would have to have a, a city plan in place. It's also a necessary requirement from any state federal grants, so that's why it's a good idea to have one. Um, but if you want to have one, you have to meet these four requirements. It has to be consistent with the state planning goals, it has to be compatible with the regional plan, has to be compatible with other planes in the region and it has to contain the twelve elements of Title Twenty Four. And so you've got twelve elements and twelve chapters. That's part, part of the reason it ends up being that way. Um, and the regional plan will, the regional planning commission will review for read the regional plan and the regional um the neighboring communities, so that, that will be a part of our review process. So how can a city plan be used? Uh, it can be a long term guide, uh basis for decision making, action plan with implementation steps, basis for municipal regulations, lots of ways we can use a city plan. Our goals, as mentioned earlier, um, was to have these storyboards, which are kind of web pages that uh, you can see sometimes, um, and we'll go over them to kind of show what they look like. To give uh the public and decision makers the background of uh the topic and what are our goals and generally what are we going to do to achieve them? It's kind of meant to be the fifty thousand foot view of an understanding of what is housing, why is it important in Montpelier? Why is energy, what are we going to do to accomplish our goals on energy? Um, the strategies in the implementation plan are those specific steps that have been worked out with the committees and the planning commission to describe, okay, if these are our goals, these are going to be the steps we're going to need to get there. So the overall process for this plan update, um, this is our public input, this is not a public hearing, it's just input. Um, we've developed twelve chapters, we're actually eleven chapters are done, I'm working on the twelfth right now. Um, we're reviewing them with the public three chapters at a time, it was supposed to take four to six months, we're at about eight months right now. But we're hoping to get this wrapped up by the end of the calendar year, um, so we did them in blocks of three. Each will have uh different input opportunities plus comments online and through surveys. Once complete, the planning commission will review all the comments and make final revisions before going to uh, final public hearing draft. So our, our goal now is to get as many of the issues corrected as we can, any omissions, things we need to address before we go to public hearing, so we can have a smooth public hearing process. When ready, uh, a public hearing process will begin with planning commission, public hearings, and then the council will also have two hearings, at least two hearings. So our topics tonight, natural resources, public safety and community justice and economic development. So those uh, public safety and community justice are one group. Um, three chapters in two parts, so as we mentioned, each one has a storyboard, each one has implementation plans. All nine pieces are on the, the city website. But will eventually be on their own page. Uh, each storyboard has an introduction, plan, context, implementation summary, they all follow the same kind of script. So that way they're consistent as you go from storyboard to storyboard, they all follow the same uh general format. And each implementation strategy follows the same format of an aspiration, goals, um, and then strategies. And the strategies are then actionable items to achieve the goals. So uh, the example we like to use is if you have a, you might have a goal of safe and affordable housing. We'd have a goal for safe housing and a goal for affordable housing. Um, because the strategies to get safe housing might be different than the, the same strategies for having uh affordable housing. So uh, this is a little bit of what they look like, this is the top of the transportation page. This is uh, the implementation plan on the right, the storyboard on the left. And we can go through these um in a minute, but this is what we're talking about when we talk about the storyboard and the implementation plan. So the rest of tonight, I'm going to leave the PowerPoint. Um, what are we looking for? Um, what we want are opinions, what, what do you like, not like about the various elements? Do you have specific comments about the content, are there specific strategies that are missing? Do you have questions we can answer? Um, we can always take emails later if you choose. Um, really, we're just, we've put this together, working with the committees to try to come up with um, what would be our city plan for moving forward? What is it the city government can do? You won't see action that says, you know, people should, residents should do this or businesses should do that. This is all about what are the actions the city as a government can do to either encourage or incentivize people to do things if that's the situation. So if you have questions or comments, I guess I should have introduced myself, I'm Mike Miller, I'm the planning director for the city. Um, and that's my email address, mmillar@montpelier-vt.org. So let me jump out here and if we want to
Yeah, I think
Quick comments or?
Take some comments. And we can
And then I can open
Specific chapters left.
Uh, and Tim, Tim is a counselor, but he's here. Well, let me go back to airing really quick. All right, so just to quickly orient people again, if you're on Orca watching this later. This is the city's website, if you go to our website, as I had mentioned earlier, if you scroll down, you will find this set of things. You also notice that city planning department has moved to the Leonite Building, if you're looking for me. Leaf pickup, strategic plan, and there's the city plan. And if you click on the city plan, it will take you to the city plan twenty twenty four, which will probably eventually have to change to twenty twenty five pretty quick. Where we have explore the chapters and here's where I'd mentioned, we have these nine storyboards. They'll soon be twelve, when we put the last three in, we'll probably actually go to the new website when we put the last three in. Um, and these are the implementation plans. Now, I'll point out that we did public safety a little bit different. We actually broke it into its different pieces, dispatch, police, community justice and fire EMS. Otherwise, it would be like eleven pages of these and the PDFs are big, so we wanted to keep them uh, of a, of a reasonable size for people, people to be able to open them and download them. Is there a specific one of these three that you guys want to look at? The natural resources, economic, public safety? Okay, I'll open that one first. What did they do? I tested them this morning. They've moved me. What did you do to me? Maybe I can sneak in the back door here. Item unavailable. Even in the back door, it's gone. Yeah, the implementation does work, my apologies, that was there this morning, so then maybe somebody in Burlington is working on it. Sorry about that, that was the storyboard, the implementation plan looks like. So the economic development implementation plan looks like this and all of them follow the same format. So um, on the right, you would have, I gotta minimize this. The aspirations, um which the aspiration for economic development was, uh, and I'll just read them. Montpelier will be a great place for people in the workforce to live because we provide equal access to employment through available housing opportunities, affordable housing and services, childcare and transportation for all members of the workforce. And by connecting these workers to the regional and state resources that are available for workforce development. And second, Montpelier will maintain a robust local economy by supporting quality private development and by ensuring those projects have access to ample infrastructure. So the thoughts and the theories that went in behind these two was that there was one aspiration that targeted um, the businesses and the properties um and that side. And there's one aspiration that is focused on um the people, the workforce, the labor. Um, because to, to be successful, we need to have the businesses be successful and we also need the workers to be successful. So from an economic development standpoint, what do we need to make workers successful? And from an economic development, what do we need to make the businesses successful? Because clearly there are different tools that are going to be needed to help each one of these groups. And then the goals, there are six goals and I believe the first two focus on the labor and the other four on the businesses. So uh, big picture, the, the goals for what workers need to be successful, we found there were three barriers to workers being successful. And they were um, having affordable housing, having housing, transportation and childcare, those are the three big things. So what can we as government do to help make sure those are less of a barrier or not a barrier to uh individuals who are looking to participate in the workforce? So that was the, the three big things that we were looking at. Obviously, there's a lot of things that can impact somebody's ability to participate in, in the workforce. But those were the three big that we felt needed to be addressed. And then there was a second one that kind of came in or a fourth one that kind of came a little bit less than that, which was um, trying to make sure workers had access to workforce development. Um, so that's why number one really talks about those, those first three. Number two is talking about um accessing, but we don't as a city government provide workforce development. So what can we do to help people access workforce development was what we were trying to get at with number two. And then three, four, five, six are looking at how do we help businesses to be successful? Continue to improve our business and economic climate to encourage and support businesses, various strategies that we have for doing that. Increase the number of local businesses through retention and expansion programs. We don't have many, but we do need to increase and improve those as well as improving for startups and entrepreneurs with a goal of increasing the number of jobs by 100 per year. The fifth was improve our building stock to remain it more flexible, efficient, and well maintained. Maintain and improve the quality and supply of our necessary utilities and facilities. So recognizing that businesses are one group, not all businesses own their buildings. So having good buildings that are flexible, ready to go will help economic growth, making sure we have the utilities that are available and ready to go will help economic growth. And the last is to maintain and improve our sense of place and quality of the public built environment. And this is a little bit more of the the, the, the less of the brick and mortars and more of there, the successful places, a lot of successful places are successful because they're unique and offer a sense of place. In Montpelier, I think does a good job with that. Other places are just many times. You know, if you took a picture, you might not know whether you were in one town or another, because there's just nothing giving a sense of place. If you got a picture of downtown Montpelier, you know you're in Montpelier. So we need to maintain that and make sure we don't lose that sense of place. So those are the goals. And then the strategies are all these sent, all these sets of things, and they relate back. You'll see renew the tax increment finance program, just as an example, has its priorities, its cost. Then it helps implement goals five and six. Develop a housing marketing outreach program. That's also a thing in our housing plan. So it's actually just repeated here. Helps us implement goal number one. So that's what all of these are. They highlight which goals they're helping to implement because one strategy may help us accomplish a couple of different goals, depending on how that is used. And so we've got a basically a page and a half of these of various strategies that have been identified to help with economic development. Is there a specific one you had questions with that you wanted us to? Or comment? Okay, yeah, yeah. For public, for the public to hear, you have to be at the microphone.
Oh, um, well, I guess two things. One is focusing on the outdoor recreation. Seems like a really smart move for Montpelier to take advantage of. I think all of our businesses are great, but I noticed Onion River Outdoors has these amazing events every year, like the Muddy Onion that draw in hundreds of people from across the state and outside of Vermont. And it's like fantastic advertising for the city to draw these people in. But the real reason I came is I wanted to highly recommend that you increase or bolster the strategies towards improving childcare. It's funny to live in a capital where there's no like childcare facility in like the downtown area. We do have childcare facilities, but nothing central. And I think it would be, this is like, it's easy to say, I know it's hard to do. If there's a way to talk to the executive branch about like finding a place for state employee childcare in one of the many vacant facilities downtown. People will travel, people will come into work again if they know that there's a spot for their child in a good licensed daycare facility. I know people now who travel from like Topsum and like I'm not even sure where Topsum is, but they come here because they work here and they drop their child off at a daycare center here. That's, you know, that's why they come into to work in Montpelier. And you can, you know, do the math, like you bring people back into the office for that kind of a benefit. And they'll hopefully shop more downtown and eat out more often. So I know it's one of the goals, and I think that's great, but it's not really like, I don't it could be bolstered by a strategy. So I'd encourage you to think more about what could be done there.
So there will be more on the, what's coming up in the next chapter is community services. And one of the requirements in community services is childcare. So we do have much more in there. But we should do a better job of making sure we tie this to those strategies to make sure that people know that those exist. And I think, I think the connection, or I hope the connection is there in the storyboard that we can't see. That has that connection because we do have a lot of, a lot more targeted suggestions in, in the community services chapter, which will be coming up in December.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah. I'm Tim Heaney, resident of Montpelier and speaking as a citizen and as a city council member, hopefully. But this is my first, I've been trying to follow this process. And economic development is obviously a key one. The two, I guess I would have comments about are develop a housing and marketing or housing marketing and outreach program. It's like I'm just not sure what that's really gonna do. We really, housing is a priority that we need to create, and I think we need to maybe have a strategy with a little more power than that. I really feel like part of our issue is with things that have happened in the past that developers and people that wanna do things may not view Montpelier as an easy, friendly place to come in and create housing. And I think we need to work on that and find ways to be more appealing to show that you can create housing here. And Gabe's working on it. And we hope you're successful, but it's really we have a really honorous zoning code. It has a nice preamble that says we want to create more housing. And then there's, it's a pretty tough document to navigate after that. I, I, it's something I think we need to update and make it cleaner, simpler and more effective. And the other piece I would mention is the economic development strategic plan in my comments on that or previous life, I was on the Montpelier Development Corp, which came out of this plan. And that was a great group that tried to help generate some economic development. Unfortunately, I think as a community, we've got to mature and realize that economic development is a long-term plan. It's nothing that's gonna happen unless you get really lucky, you know, in six months or a year. So I, I think the words there again are kind of like, okay, they're in the in the city plan, but I'm not sure if we keep going the way we are with this economic development strategic plan, we're gonna go anywhere. That was a really unsatisfactory process with the Montpelier Development Corp. And I think if you'd interviewed any of the people that were in it personally, you'd find that once it was formed, some aspects of the city really didn't want it or favor it and didn't include it in development activities and conversations that were happening. So it was like formed and then left out there and said every few months, we want a progress report as if everything was gonna happen in six months. And I think if that's the attitude we're going at this with, you might as well remove that because it really wasn't good. So I think we can be really positive and enhance bringing businesses into town. But this piece isn't the way to do it.
I have a question, a follow-up question. So it sounds to me like the develop housing, marketing and outreach program, you think isn't going far enough, like marketing to developers is not what the city needs to do. The city needs to actually
Right.
Create better zoning rules. I think you're, you're saying like the marketing isn't the issue.
Correct.
The marketing is not the issue, there's earning rules.
And developers are a pretty small group and they're paying attention, following the economy, seeing where opportunities are. If they see that this is a place that you can create housing, that there's reasonable rules they can work with. We have capacity for water, sewer, schools and all our infrastructure. Could be a great place to create housing. But for some reason, there's a billboard out there where we've stopped enough projects where people just go, you know, I, I don't wanna do it there. And we've got to break through that. And I also think developers aren't a crowd that you're gonna bring to a boot camp. I mean, it's, it's a pretty small group and they work independently. It'd be interesting to see who would show up if you had one, but
Yes, yeah, I think that's what they were trying to get at the housing committee with, with the, the negative opinions of working in Montpelier and the thought was, you know, if, if, if we do some of the other housing initiatives to, you know, whether it's streamlining the zoning or, but whatever, we could do all the great things in the world, but if our reputation is still bad, we need to market to people to go and say, hey, this is, you know, this is a good place. We've got the sewer, we've got the water, we've got the well, maybe it's the, the Tiff district, or maybe it's whatever it is. We have to start selling it if we're gonna get developers in. I think once projects start, we don't need to continue that program. No need to spend money marketing to people. Once people see projects happening, they're gonna, they're gonna come in to figure out, hey, why, why is, why is so and so and so and so working on a project here? There must be something working right now and nothing's working. So that's why they wanted the marketing program. And somebody noted the bootcamp. That's why that reference is in there. I, you know, as I said, I, I think the state has come up with a, a new manual now. They're trying to encourage new people to get in and they actually have a manual now. You know, if you're interested in getting into the housing construction industry, here's, here's how you start and do your business, you know. It's an actual book. We've got a couple of copies in my office. And so it's meant to try to help get people in the door to start because we just don't have enough builders. And so that would, that would help getting more builders. So but yes, I recognize, I, I agree with you. But some of the housing things will come out of the housing plan. We, these were just one of the ones that we thought would be good here because also our builders are also part of economic development, whether they're building housing or whether they're building businesses. Builders and developers themselves are part of our economic base. And we need more of them.
Yeah, we're only building a couple of houses a year. We're not, we're not getting there. We, we need more. We do.
Can I ask a follow-up question? So are you, is your recommendation to just strike these or just strengthen them? I wasn't clear.
I mean, I'd like them to be there because housing is a key goal for our community. I'm just not, I'm not feeling like these are the right strategies to create the housing. And the economic development strategic plan. The concept is great, but we've got to really put something behind it to make it happen. And in economic development at the bigger scale, it, it's, it's a hard thing to plan. I mean, opportunities happen and you have to be prepared to take advantage of them when the right people are there and when something can happen. It's really hard to, to schedule it on the timeline. You want it to happen. I mean, and that's one thing I've learned in my career. I've been amazed at how many times a large company searching for a property or space. And they'll just walk into our office. There's no appointment and they'll have three people from three different parts of the country and nobody called ahead. And they're here to find a space or an opportunity for their business. And it's just the way it works. And if you're not ready to roll with that when it happens, they go to Berlin or they go to Barry or wherever they end up. So it's just, you've got to have everything planned and ready to take advantage of the opportunities when the developer arrives or when the business arrives.
You, you need to have somebody who's there in the office who knows where the vacancies are, what do we have as, as available so we can connect people up? Or maybe it's something that we aren't well suited for, but there's somebody else in the county that might be. As we used to go and say, somebody might show up, want five acres and you know, 40,000 square feet. And we're like, well, we don't really have that. But here are a couple of places you could go and look where, because we don't wanna lose them to somewhere else. If they don't fit for Montpelier, it's not bad to have it go to Berlin or Berry City.
Chip sack, like you can go around the country and find places that built, they built factories so that people would bring their businesses there, you know. So I mean, these are the kinds of things I think that we gotta talk about. Do we wanna do that?
So piggybacking off of that, it sounds to me like the strategy is aimed at the public, convincing the public that economic development is worth our while. Because I mean, education is focused on the public, not on
There is a component that is focused on the public because we have had, this was, and this came up, whether it's conversations with our the, the MDC, the Montpelier Development Corp, that, that folded or economic developers who worked in our city or associated with it. There's there's not a lot of public support behind a lot of the economic development projects. And you get, you get a number of headwinds. There'll be a lot of people that support it, but you'll also get some headwinds. And sometimes that's enough to turn off a developer or, or to point them into a different direction. And sometimes we just have to explain to the and educate the public what economic development is and why, as we pointed out here, economic development is what's good for people and what's good for business. And we can't offer good jobs if we don't have the businesses that provide them. And so we kinda need to have these two working together. We can't have successful businesses if we don't have a good workforce that complements that, that business that's trying to move in.
So Mike, can I just clarify process where we've done the, the initial three chapters? You guys, your team put those all on a spreadsheet and then had some staff recommendations. And then you brought that back to another meeting where we would have time to talk about it again, right? So these comments from Tim we'll talk about again.
Yes, yes. Well, we will be back to, to take these and any other comments that we get on economic development that we can go through.
For you as well. I, I can't remember your name. Laura, yeah.
So we can get a, yeah, we can go back and, and I, I, I agree with Tim. I think that the EDSP, most of us agree that that particular document is not very good. And I think we needed to have a better document. And I think the way this is worded, when Tim mentioned it, I read it, it's like update a new economic development strategic plan. I think we could do a better job with that description. That title might be okay, but we should do a better job with the description to say, you know, this, this needs to be a new product. We need to go and develop a new EDSP to talk about, you know, what, what we wanna do because again, we can't recommend strategies if we don't have you know, the overall goal in place of what it is we're trying to do.
Can I, can I just ask?
Have a tough time with our downtowns.
Since Tim happens to be here, did you guys have any, I, I don't know the background on it. Did you have an executive director? Do you have full-time staff that were supporting it or is it just community?
We hired, we, we did hire our executive director.
You hired three of them, I think.
And we had our time to keep them. All for personal reasons, it wasn't Montpelier.
Yeah, it was, you did a good job picking people.
It was one person or?
It was one person.
Okay, so that would be the equivalent of Josh?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's why now when when Kevin Casey left and the position reopened and we had Josh come in, we changed his position to be a community and economic development specialist as opposed to just a community development specialist. He's a community and economic development specialist because he was, he worked for Community Capital. He worked for Berry, Berry Development. So he's done economic development. That's actually his bread and butter is economic development. So we're, we were very excited to have him and be ready to have him jump in and do a lot of economic development. And then like three months later, it floods. So
He's been writing a lot of grants for us.
We will get him back. He, he, he's doing a great job and, but eventually he wants to, and we want to have him get back to economic development. So getting the plan in place will help to kinda steer how things go. And I think there, there are a lot of issues which are discussed in our storyboard that you know, things have changed. I mean, our last plan was 2018, 2017. You know, that's, that's before COVID, that's before remote work from all the all, all that issue, you know, back in 2018, we were worried about parking. We don't worry about parking. You know, now we're, we've got other, other issues. How do we keep our businesses? We've got more vacancies in our downtown. We have a flood. How are we gonna go and fill these spaces? And that, that's gonna take somebody with, it's gonna take a vision of what we wanna try to get to and, and some skills on and investment on getting there. And I think that's why economic development, it was just a, by way of background for, for many, many years, it wasn't till maybe 2016 or 17 or 18, economic development wasn't even a required plan in, in city plans, wasn't even a required chapter. So we've had it, but it's, it, it's, it's only been recently that it's really been a chapter and it's, you know, it's important. It's why we've got it here, but we do need to build this out as to our, our directions and what are, what are the barriers to, to success and that's regulatory barriers or public or just infrastructure.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things, I, I know you're still working on the whatever we're gonna look at next, right? But as this feeds into the resilience, I mean, yes, we wanted a resilience chapter. I, I know it's been a couple of months since I brought it up. I think part of the resilience is the fact that we probably aren't gonna have 4,000 workers coming into all these state buildings again. And so it is economic resilience. It's not just resilience against the, you know, the wind and the rain. It's resilience about how, how do we keep everything afloat? We don't want, you know, 2019 to be the high watermark of what Montpelier could be, right? But it's gonna take some thinking about. I don't know if that's already part of what you're preparing for resilience or not.
It's heavily flood, but it does recognize that resilience, resilience is resilience from anything. And we've, you know, as we It's heavily flood, but it does recognize that resilience, resilience is resilience from anything. And we've, you know, as we, it's mentioned in there that, you know, pandemics and you know, we've been around enough to terrorism and, and different parts of the country. I mean, there, there's a lot of things that could end up being a factor that we've got to deal with. Storms, heat waves. Lots of stuff that can, you know, some of them may be just small bumps, but at the same time, you need to be resilient. You can't have businesses going down. And I, I think the flood is one of the big ones. But obviously the pandemic was huge for, for us. Uh, it wasn't just a matter of getting ourselves recalibrated to pandemic comes to an end and nobody comes back to work. So that's certainly a factor that we need to be aware of going forward is. You know, it could be, you know, in the past, it could have been big box retailers, could have been a, a discussion point for resilience. What are we going to do with our downtown? If these big box retailers keep drawing customers away.
May I ask a question about the difference between plan, the program and project?
Yes. So one of the things we did is we had, um, to try to keep people. When we were starting this is we wanted to make sure people were talking, when we were talking about a strategy, it had to be, had to be a thing. And so there were five Ps. Plans. Which are, you don't, we don't understand what it is. So in the next eight years, we got to study this issue because we don't have an answer for it. Programs are ongoing things. So, um, tax stabilization is a program. It's an ongoing thing. The, the permits are what you'd expect. They're the regulations. So sometimes the best way to accomplish a goal is through regulations. And if we had natural resources up, a lot of your natural resources, how, you know, how do we prevent water pollution and all these other things? A lot of it's through regulations. So that's permits. Policies are how we spend our money. As a government. So what we do with our resources. So we don't need to pass a law or have a program in order to, um, make city hall net zero. We just have to go and have a policy that we're going to do it. Because it's, it's there or how we use our staff. It was, so really policies are all about how we operate, how we spend our money. So they're kind of in their own group. And so let me try to remember now, plans, policies, programs, projects. Projects are the last one. Projects are things you do once. So we might have a project of, uh, Country Club Road. We're only going to do one of those. Build a transit center. We're only going to one of those. So sometimes the solution to a problem is to complete a project or start a project. So that's, those are the five Ps. So when we tried, most of this came up when we were working with the committees, we would try to work with them. Okay. Because sometimes people get tunnel vision and they only think about permits. The only thing about regulations. And sometimes you want to get them out. It's like, well, there's more, more ways. Don't just think about regulations when you're talking about economic development. It's not all about regulations. We can come up with programs and we can come up with policies and we can come up with other things. Think something outside. So that was why we had this broke out into these five Ps. And there'll be a little bit more explanation of that when we get to the final actual website, uh, the landing page and about the plan. We'll kind of talk about why we have it set up that way.
Awesome. Thanks. Any other?
So I'll just grab one of the public safeties, just so we've got it as a as an example, because they had uh, public safety was broken to four pieces. Originally it's broken into five, one of them being emergency management. We've taken that one and given it to resilience. So it's now these four. But because they tended, there really was no overlap in strategies. So it got very confusing when you lumped everybody together because you had all the goals and aspirations upfront. And then these long 11 pages of strategies that weren't very close to the goals. So by putting it together in this way, we've got our aspirations and goals here on the left. Uh, including the six that the police have, uh, the police. They're, um, they operate by the 20, uh, 21st, six pillars of 21st century policing. So that's why there are the six goals. And as Maria had pointed out, the public safety tended to be a little bit more of an agency plan as opposed to a city plan. So it really is. What are our goals for our police department and how should they operate? And what are the strategies associated with them as opposed to maybe a community wide? But we can always go through and insert things. If there are public safety related things, we can certainly go through and, and target them into these as well.
And so can you remind me, did the, did each department write these or how were these?
I, I put them together based on a lot of the information that I could get out of, uh, the, the city reports and working with the, the police chief at the time. And then we put this together and kind of met with them to kind of go over what we, what we saw and heard. And there was general support that this is what they're looking for and what they're comfortable with. So they're general enough that it doesn't put anyone into a corner, but it also is specific enough that it helps them in grant writing. Cause again, like we said, you can use plans to get grants. So having things specifically in here that says, we, we want this or we need this, whether it's a piece of technology or, um, in this case, there, they, they felt it was important to renew the school resource officer. Now again, that's their goal. We've left it in there. It'll eventually go to the, the city council for them to go through and consider. And it's a goal. It doesn't commit us or tie us to doing it. It's just that's their goal. They feel that is an important piece to their being successful as a police department. So that was a little bit why public safety came out a little bit differently, but
Yeah, that's, that's an interesting one to think about. Cause I know there's a big movement at the school to remove the
Yep. And they did.
Right. So the, well, the community at large could feel a lot differently about that.
But let's go back and at least see one that actually works for a storyboard. I'll grab natural resources because that was the only one we didn't look at. So each one opens with a quick little, um, thing, natural resources, protecting and stewarding Vermont's landscape. And this has actually been fixed. They actually found out how to fix this. So this should be gone by tomorrow. Maybe that's why economic development isn't up. It's because they were fixing it. They were going to be working on it today. So Montpelier's unique natural settings influences both development patterns and the character of Montpelier. Our urban core centered on the confluence of two rivers. Two major goals to protect and steward Vermont, uh, Montpelier's landscape and natural resources and two to be a compact settlement with concentrated development, reducing development pressure on surrounding countryside. So one of our goals of natural resources is actually by being a compact settlement, we are protecting the rural countryside. Um, development has to happen somewhere. Housing has to happen somewhere. If it's not happening here in our compact settlements, that's pushing it out into our, into our natural resources. So it doesn't sometimes seem it, seem like it on, on its surface, but you think about it, our, our downtown helps us protect the natural resources that may be in Montpelier, but also may be in our neighboring communities. So the, the second step, and you'll see along the top, these are in every single chapter, introduction, plan context, synergies, implementation, summary, who's involved? And then there's an opportunity for feedback. So I'm not going to read through all of these, but, um, it, the plan context is based around maps. So what we want, what we have for each one of our chapters is an opportunity. And these are interactive maps. You can move them around. And so, um, in this case, we're talking about the city of Montpelier uses a natural resource inventory to maintain thorough and accurate records of environmental resources and hazards in Montpelier. So we can click on wetlands. It, it will turn on the wetlands layer. And whatever you're working on, you can zoom in and actually see. So there's our designated downtown, little dashed line. We've got a wetland here on Blanchard Brook. So you can move around. Um, that's kind of the advantage of these maps. Gives you the ability to kind of move around where the significant natural resources and they get highlighted. Streams and rivers, fernal pools. Uh, development limitations. So you can click the buttons below to look at where we all know exists. It'll probably take a second to load steep slopes. Oh, come on, you can do it. So there's flood plains. Branch corridor, which would be up here. Is our North Branch corridor? And deep slopes was working again. I'm wondering how much work they're working on right now. Cause I talked with them this morning. I think they didn't realize Tuesday night, we would be having a meeting. But again, the idea is when the plan is all done, you're going to have the ability to move around and really see what are the issues and describe, you know, forest blocks and wildlife connectivity through the, um, throughout state. So we've got when the state talks about wanting to protect forest blocks, they actually have maps that show you where the forest blocks are. And this is the forest block. It actually connects mostly through what is called the crest view up on Terrace Street. And a little bit that comes in here, um, the interstate is kind of coming through. That's on route 12 on Northfield Street. So. But this gives you the ability in whatever chapter you're looking at to go through and and we're updating a few of these layers. We want to clean up and have them kind of clip those off. So we've got a little bit of cleanup work to do. But for the most part, that's what the plan context is supposed to be trying to, to show you are, where are the resources? Let you really interact, zoom in on your house, see how close you are to a wetland or, or a steep slope and understand what's going on in the community. The synergies, which I had mentioned before with economic development. This is where we try to talk about how does this natural resources impact other chapters? We've got 12 chapters. They overlap a lot. You've got transportation. You might have public transportation and your transportation infrastructure might impact economic development and your transportation infrastructure. Transportation may also impact your energy plan because cars are a leading source of greenhouse gas. So you can't talk about transportation without talking about these other chapters. Natural resources impacts utilities and facilities, land use and transportation. Um, and it goes through your transportation is closely related to natural resources as transportation infrastructure and emissions can threaten environmental quality. For example, impervious surface runoff contributes to our increasing flooding and warming impacts on streams. Transportation emissions also contribute to air pollution and climate impacts. The traffic chapter addresses several of these, uh, addresses several transportation related impacts, including runoff from impervious surface and broader impacts to promote low and no carbon transportation options. So again, this is, um, how these come together. With synergies, we talked about how they interact. In this case, only had three other chapters. Some of these synergies can be, have five or six chapters. Uh, and then the implementation summary, and these come directly out of that sheet we just looked at. We've got the aspiration, three goals. Uh, actually one aspiration and six goals. And then the implementation summary is a written description of all of those strategies. So it just tries to summarize the strategy. So if you were to go through and just want to understand natural resources, you could read and get through, and then we would have a description of what's our goals and what are we doing about it? And that's what this is described in here. They break, if you were to look at all those strategies in the implementation plan, you'd find a group into four different groups. Understanding the resources, engagement, um, engagement with the community, conservation and protection of resources. So that's how those tools, you might find a number of them in each one, but how do we, we can't protect the resources if we don't know where they are and what they are. So that's one thing. What is the conservation, the parks commission going to do about developing, uh, a national resources inventory? So we know what needs to be protected. The second piece is the engagement with the public. People protect what they understand. They're, you know, if they don't understand it and they aren't informed about it, then they can't, they, they're less interested in participating to protect it. And whether that's creating volunteer programs. Or other initiatives, that's the second goal is engagement. The third being the green print initiative. That's the third major tool and that's used in the parks commission. That's what lands are we going to buy and conserve or, um, get easements on. And then the last piece is, um, the impacts of, of development on natural resources. How do we protect it? And this is where the regulations come in. You need regulations if you're going to regulate stormwater runoff. Uh, you can have some programs that might do it, but really a lot of times you're adopting rules to protect stormwater runoff or these other, uh, other pieces. So that's where the, the fourth set. And then who's involved? We've got various departments. We've got the tree board. We've got parks commission. We've got conservation commission. So this kind of lays out who's involved in this, what departments, uh, planning department is involved in this. Cause we do NFIP, the national flood insurance, and we do community rating system, which protects our flood plains and we enforce the regulations. But it's the tree board that is doing the Emerald Ash Boreers and all these other programs to, to protect the urban, uh, forestry. So that's how each one of these chapters is laid out. Um, certainly there are things we missed or things that are inaccurate. We're always looking for input, but the idea is for all 12 of these chapters that it's visually, uh, interesting and appealing and, um, as I said, hopefully we get these, these map, little map issues fixed up. Because it's a lot nicer to look at these when they actually work. But it's my fault for talking to them this afternoon about making changes. So.
And just as a reminder, for, for anyone also who might be watching this, I mean, you, you can always email like comments if you're not attending the public input sessions. So.
On any of the 12, any of the 12 chapters. And hopefully, like I said, we'll get the last three chapters up in, in the next couple of weeks.
I don't know if anyone else has any other items you wanted to cover, but I'd love to just kind of go over the schedule sort of for the, the plan going forward.
And then
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you for coming. And then, um, approve the minutes and maybe even end a little early. Cause I think we also want to plan, uh, you know, some meetings. I think we haven't gone through, Maria has been very good about going through the matrix and reviewing all the comments, but I am, I am behind. And I think we want a couple working sessions to make sure that we're.
Can I get access to said?
Yes.
I will have to, I will send you a connection to that.
Yeah. Do you, I, I will, do you mind just sending all of us again, access to that? Just so it's top of my inbox. And I think it's a Google sheet, right? Where we can enter in our own comments.
Yeah.
It's about, that's helpful. We can.
And the expectation is just, is that what we're going to go over right now is the?
Oh, no, no, no. I, I was just, I was just trying to like, cause I know that we are on a, you know, we want to get this city plan done within a certain time and there's holiday, you know, there's always things that are coming up. So I just kind of wanted to review the schedule and also make sure that we have a, a few meetings to make sure that we're thoroughly reviewing the public comments. So.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. That's good. When Mike, do you think you'll have the next three chapters ready?
Community services is already done. Resilience. resilience, as I said, I've got a draft of each. Um, it depends. I guess if we have time and you guys want to review it, or we can have somebody take a look at it in the committee, you know, sometimes.
I think it makes sense for us to look it over.
Look it over before we, you know.
Yeah.
So we'll try, I'll try to get those two ready. So probably the first meeting in December. Because we have one more meeting in November. And usually we've been doing three meetings on, for public input. So we would have one more on these three chapters that we just did. And then we can, and if we have time, we can look at them at that time, but probably December, we'll have those other ones ready.
Okay. So the last three are community service, resilience and land use?
And land use.
And land use is drafted or?
Land use is not drafted. That's the one I've started to put stuff together and get it to Nick so he could start making maps. He makes the maps and then we send them to S E group, who is our consultant, who's actually building storyboards. So, um, they're going to need the text and the maps, and then they put them together.
Okay.
And so usually we meet as a planning commission to talk about the text in a written out form and go through and say, do you guys like the text here? And it's a plug and play onto the website and plug it in.
So that one will be, will not, you're still working on it? Won't be ready?
We will probably have to discuss it December 11th or whatever it is to approve the text. Then I can give it to them. So we might not have that public input session till maybe January, because we'll have to approve it first amongst us for resilience and for
Yeah. Okay. Right.
For land use, then they can plug it in, build the website.
Yeah. Okay. That's what I thought you were saying for all three of them is that we needed to review, but you're saying just resilience and land use.
Just resilience and land use. You guys already reviewed community service.
Okay.
This community service, is that not like the parks and recreation component? That must have been before. That must have been a while. So I don't remember.
I don't remember. I know.
Okay, good. So I was like, oh, I hope, I hope we didn't do this whole thing without.
But a senior community center.
Yeah.
Yes.
Maybe you weren't at that meeting. So Mike, you think December 2nd? We would have
We meet the second and
No. The ninth and the 20th, well, the 23rd.
Yeah, right. Exactly. Um.
So we, we would hopefully try to do as much as we can on the ninth, get everything done, because we probably won't meet the 23rd. And then that will give them the time. If they've got it after the ninth, they have it on the 10th, then they've got basically a month to put everything into the website. And really build all the other pieces, because I'm hoping that, as I said, this would be the last time that we have public input that's not in the the, 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 the landing page and the actual document. We actually can
Right.
start putting all the pieces in, because people should be able to interact through all 12 documents now.
Okay.
The reason we didn't was because if we opened them up to the website, all we're going to get comments on is I clicked on land use and it doesn't, it says error and I click on transportation, it says error. Well, yes, because they're not on yet. We get that with this, but it would have been a lot worse if it was. Went to have out the plan and there's nothing there. It's like, no, I haven't built it yet.
So the nine will be reviewing resilience and land use?
And land use, we would have to. Yeah.
Um, and then we'll do the last public input for these chapters on November 23rd or something. Okay. Um, and then hopefully do public input for those.
Or
The other two would have to be in January then.
In January.
Yeah.
The number 25th or?
Oh, 25th. Okay. Thanks.
I mean, could we also possibly tack on reviewing some of the matrix? That meeting?
Yeah.
Just, you know?
Yeah. Yes. That would be good.
Have a public engagement.
Yes.
We can get some more.
Yeah. Okay. And then the community service resilience land use, those public sessions would be in January, February. Maybe, um, and then
Then we have to have a public hearing, right?
And then, right. I know.
And we've got to have, yeah, then we'll have to have everybody say it's okay that's any of the comments that we've gotten. Now we've gotten through a lot of the comments. We've only gotten a handful of comments that are actual recommended changes that we have to go through. Laura had some, Tim had some here that we'll have to go through. Uh, but we didn't get the list like we had, we did the first three and we had a hundred and five comments
Yeah.
that we had to go through. And we went through those. The next three, um, we had two chunks. We're still waiting to get energy chapter done. That's still
Oh, oh, right.
We, we approved all, we approved the other two. But we had a number of changes to energy plan, which I sent back to MEAC and MEAC was supposed to get back to me. So I'm going to have to check with them. But we'll need to get some final, you guys to approve the final changes on, on the energy plan. Um, but then we've got these three chapters, which have had limited number of comments, so we don't have a lot to review there, but then we'll be, I'm sure we'll get a lot of comments on land, land use and resilience. Yeah, I'm hoping resilience will be pretty close. I mean, it's a, it's a big topic. It's an important topic, but I don't think it's a controversial topic. Um, land use though can always be a controversial topic, because that's where we start talking about items like the growth center and, uh, those types of big, big issues, although we've gotten through our big zoning change. So we're not uh, other communities, when they've gone through, they've had these big land use plans where they want to make big changes to their zoning and they're putting them into their city plan or their town plan for the first time. So that can be controversial. In our case, we've kind of done it the other way and we updated our zoning and now we're plugging it into the city plan. So it should be a lot less controversial.
Right. Um, so when do we sort of, when are we? Because you know, after this, right? We'll have MEAC come back with the energy chapter. We'll have some more public comments. So we'll need to kind of, I assume do some working and finalizing, but when then we have to have public hearings and remind me how many we have to have and like when?
I always have to look it up because they make them state law for some reason makes them ever so slightly different between plans and zoning. And it's just enough for me to go through and say, I gotta look it up.
Okay.
So one of them usually, usually it's like one planning commission and there has to be a 30 day wait and then city council has to have two, but
Okay. Well, maybe
Public hearings, but you can have more, uh, but that's just the minimum is, is those. But as we said, hopefully we, we go through our public hearing uh, in what I guess would probably be early February at this point. And if that goes well, then you just make a motion to send it to city council. And then we have as many hearings at council as council.
Yeah, but it has to be finalized for it to go to a public hearing. I mean, we wait, we wait
Yes.
think that February is going to be us just making sure that we're all reviewing the whole plan and taking the comments into consideration and then
Yeah.
So maybe
Final reading, making sure everything is right.
It'll all be web based. We'll be all click through and do everything, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And then the sort of the hard deadline is to have it done by the end of 2025. Is that sort of?
2025, but we would like to have it done earlier. But again, I've always said, um, the public hearings take as long as it takes. As long as, you know, uh, I've had him, it's been a part of zoning updates where we've gone through and had our two required public hearings for zoning and made the, made it adopted. And I've had zoning amendments where we had 2022 in in 2017, 20, 22 public hearings, because it just just, that's, as we say, it will take as long as it takes. Um,
Okay. It's a good, it's a good reminder. So I want to leave it to the last minute.
No, that's why, that's why we want to be done a year in advance, because if it turns out to be controversial, we always think we're going to have 12 chapters. Um, and so far we've done nine. We had one and surprisingly only one that really needed to go back for major revisions. We still have three more chapters to go. We may get another one. Um, but the thought being we will just see how it, how it goes. And when it goes to city council, um, they may have a different chapter that ends up being the one that holds things up and we need to make revisions. And they might send that chapter back to us to revise. So it could be two meetings and we're done. It could be six months. Uh, but again, once it's to the public and the public input, it's really up to the public on how long it takes.
Thanks for reviewing that. So the hard deadline is the end of 2026.
2025.
2025. Okay.
We've got to have it adopted by December of 25.
Okay. Yeah. Woo. Okay.
That's really, once, once it's to the city council, that's really on the city council.
Yeah. Once, once it's through there, you guys are done. You guys are going to participate. Um, but hopefully, as we said, once it gets to city council, hopefully if we've done our job well, the public has been aware of it. They've had a year. We've talked about this for months. Um, you know, we'll, we'll ramp up our, our input. Once we've got a public hearing draft, we can work with Evelyn about ramping up and pushing a lot of, a lot of notice out to make sure the public knows. So hopefully the goal is when it gets to city council, it's been vetted and people have heard about it. Nobody's coming in to go and say, I didn't even know this was happening. All right. Well, now's your opportunity. Let's, you know, hopefully we've addressed it. But because we've worked with the committees, our hope is that we're pretty close. You know, uh, the housing committee helped write the housing chapter. The energy committee is helping to write the energy chapter. Most of our biggest players hopefully have already participated.
And we did, there was an article in the bridge about the city plan, right?
There've been a couple over the years, because we've been doing it since 2016 now.
Yeah. But I mean, a recent, in the past year article, I'm trying to
I think it was before our first public input session.
Yeah. Okay.
Yep. But we'll be back to work with them, the bridge and, and the folks to try to make sure we get
Yeah.
as much out as we can, but it'll be a lot easier once we've got a final draft and we've got something all put together. And we've tested it and it works and it doesn't surprise me in a public hearing again. But that's, that's my fault.
All right. Does anyone, should we look at the minutes of October 28?
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you. Oh, yeah. Do you have any?
Yeah.
Pretty trimmed.
Yeah, they are pretty trimmed. I know this is, this is silly, maybe silly, but I don't actually think I made a motion to adjourn, because I don't think I make motions anymore. But I don't know who did.
I usually
I don't know if we really need to memorialize that, because we definitely made a successful motion to adjourn. I'm not, not worried about that.
October 28th. My note said Sean made it and Gabe seconded.
Okay. Well, does anyone want to move approval of the minutes with that correction?
Okay, move again.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. I I missed that you moved it before. I didn't quite hear you. Okay.
I will second based on, uh, amendment.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Great. Okay. And I think make a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Maria?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.